Welcome to Velocity, the Vista Chamber Podcast. I'm your host, Chamber CEO Rachel Beld, and it's my privilege to interview the movers, shakers, and changemakers impacting our amazing Vista community and beyond. Today, I'm joined by Vista City Council Member Dan O'Donnell, who was elected to the council in 2022 representing District Four. Originally from the Chicago area, Dan moved to San Diego in 2011 and settled here in Vista in 2018. Dan and his wife, Ally, live in South Vista with their young son Caleb and are expecting their second one in May. In his professional career, Dan works for a large national company, providing business oversight and support for small business owners throughout Southern California and Colorado. Dan's philosophy as an elected official is to put the community first, which means engaging residents in the decision-making process. I can't wait to learn more. Welcome, Councilmember O'Donnell.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm very excited to be here.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it okay if I call you Dan?
You can call me Dan.
Okay, awesome.
I've been called worse.
I'm sure, as an elected official, absolutely. Okay, so before we talk about your role like council, I want to learn a little bit about your background. So you mentioned, I mentioned the bio that you grew up in the Chicago area. Now, you're the youngest of six?
I am the youngest of six. We grew up on the south side of Chicago in a little suburb called Oak Lawn. It's about 60,000 people. You know, we had a very middle-class, mid-middle-class life, but my parents worked very hard. My dad, he was a service manager for a chain of car dealerships. He worked during the day. My mom worked overnight at the Nabisco factory. And so that allowed them to raise six kids and provide with us a lot of opportunities that they didn't have, just like their parents did for them, which so I'm grateful for. It's actually put me in the position I am today. So everything I do, I owe to them, as well as the work that my grandparents did before them. But yeah, growing up the youngest of six, I got beat up quite a bit by my older siblings.
It's perfect for being on the council.
It is perfect. It made me tough and resilient. And I don't know if I can swear, but I'm a bit of a smart ass, too. And it's much because of that.
Yeah, well, you have to be. Well, one, Chicago, two, youngest. So, perfect. So what did you, what did you study in school?
So in college, I studied as a political science major. I thought I wanted to go to law school and then realized I didn't want to be a lawyer. But I was active in the community, working on different campaigns, especially in the state of Illinois. There's an organization called Model Illinois Government, which I was elected to lead that organization back in 2005. And that was kind of like the catapult that led me to wanting to be more involved on campaigns. I had the privilege of watching the rise of Barack Obama from the state senate to the US senate to the presidency in about a four-year window. And it was incredible, but what really got me involved in politics and interested was actually the 2000 election, which was Gore and Bush. I don't know what it was in high school, but I was just enamored by that election. I think I remember watching the returns come in that night, and it was called for Gore, then it was called for Bush, then back to Gore, and then it was too close to call. And just watch it unfolding and the conversations I'd have even with my friends as seniors in high school. It really, really led to my interest in politics and trying to be more active in the community.
Yeah. Did you, were you able to vote in that election?
I was not able to vote in that election.
You were too young. Yeah. So I did vote in that election. And that also was just, I think, a real interesting moment in history of our country and in politics for our country. And really, you know, I think that's a really important point for people to recognize as, and I think there were a lot of folks who got interested in, hey, wait a minute, what's happening at the national level here? And want to understand the process.
Yeah, I think it was a pivotal point, not just in that moment in time, but I think that you can see the reverberation all the way through today's political sphere and just kind of the weather that we're in at the moment with, with the parties and a lot of independents as well. But there's a huge ripple effect that has taken place because of that one election.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, so how did you end up in San Diego?
You know, it's a great question. I actually always thought I'd move to the East Coast. I love Chicago. It's my favorite city in the world. Unfortunately, luckily enjoy it for about four months of the year. But I always wanted to move to Boston. And so I had thought about moving there, but my sister ended up going to school here in San Diego. And so I came to visit her probably three or four times back in 2010 and decided that I was going to move out here instead, because who doesn't want to live in California?
Yeah.
It's such a beautiful, it is beautiful. I fell in love with the beaches, the palm trees, just the ambiance of San Diego. And then I actually left San Diego for a year in 2014, moved to Australia.
Oh, fun.
Yeah, yeah. A friend of mine was going, and I was single with no children at the time, so figured this is the only opportunity I'll have to do that anytime soon. I had the opportunity to move back to Chicago or come to San Diego, came back to San Diego, and then I met my wife, girlfriend at the time, but met my, my wife Ally back in 2017. I had never even heard of Vista before, because when you live in San Diego, you don't go past Carlsbad for some reason. So Vista was a foreign land to me, but she loved it up here. And because I worked from home, when we decided to move in together, I moved to Vista and fell in love with the community. And that's how I ended up here.
Yeah. Well, so what, was there anything specific that led you to the decision to run for council?
You know, I'll be honest with you. I, I've always thought I would run for office at some point. I didn't know to what capacity or when that would be. Even when I moved here, I didn't think it'd be as soon as, when I ran. I really thought that it'd probably be a six to eight-year process before. So I, you know, I just got involved in the community. I would be volunteering. I joined different clubs. I did all these things. And when Mayor Franklin decided to vacate District Four so he could run for mayor, I had people approach me and ask me if I'd be open to running. So my immediate answer that I wanted to give was yes, but I had to go home and talk to Ally and see if it was something that she'd be open to and would want me to do. We decided that it was something that we could do. And so I put my, my hat in the ring, and the rest is history. Probably the closest election, I think, in Vista's history. I won by 30 votes, that election out of 8,600 cast.
Yeah, 30 votes. Yeah. Well, that just goes to show that your vote really counts.
A hundred percent.
Right. So, you know, when people say, oh, my vote won't matter. We already know California is blue, whatever. When people say that to me, it makes me so angry, because local elections is the most important election, in my opinion. It's what touches you every day. If your trash doesn't get picked up, if you flush the toilet and that doesn't go anywhere, that's a problem. If you don't have public safety, local elections matter.
If your roads are failing, you know, if your, if your schools are bad, I mean, then you talk about school board, you can, there are so many things. And I always tell people the largest impact you'll ever have is at the local level.
Totally.
Because you can still touch the fabric of your council member. I mean, you can, you can call them. I just had a phone call today that I have to call somebody back. But your ability to reach out to your elected officials at this level is probably the highest capacity you'll ever have. And so the decisions that we make do directly impact the daily lives of everybody. And, you know, I referenced my election and what it really made me do, which I wanted to do anyway, but I don't have the luxury of not listening to people. I really do try and bring everybody into the fold, which is why I host so many town halls. A lot of the big decisions that we make in Vista, I do go to the community and try and get feedback from them, because it's valuable to me. And it helps me craft a decision in the policies that we're going to bring forward. And sometimes people don't agree with me, and that's okay. I'm still going to sit down with them, have that conversation. And sometimes I've been swayed in another direction because of the conversations I've had with community members. And that's not a negative thing, you know? You need to represent the people that put you there. And sometimes that's a challenge, but you need to make sure that you're bringing everybody to the table to have those conversations.
Yeah. So in Vista, we have districts, and you represent District Four. Tell me a little bit about how you balance, because you also represent the entire city, too. And you have to think about impacts. You can't, you know, District Four isn't in a bubble. So tell me a little bit about how you balance the needs of maybe constituents in District Four with the needs of maybe other parts of our community.
I think that in District Four, we're very fortunate in certain areas, especially the Shadow Ridge, the Business Park area. A lot of the infrastructure that we have has been there and developed, because it was, it was part of the development agreement that when they built out Shadow Ridge, they would put in the sidewalks, they would put in the streetlights.
It was master planned.
Right, exactly. And so when you look at some of the other areas in the city, you under, you understand very quickly how underserved they've been. So whether it's something as simple as a streetlight or complete sidewalks, or whatever it might be, you really need to take that into account. And so even though we have this beautiful planned community in District Four, I mean, people forget that a lot of this is old agricultural area. When you look at roads, they're old goat trails.
Right.
You know, you still have the footprint of the agricultural community that was here. On top of that, you have all of these older homes and different pockets of the community throughout Vista. So you need to really take all of that into account when you're making those decisions. And it's not just about, you know, to represent the city, you need to work with other council members. And so I've effectively been able to work with every single council member that I serve with, including the mayor and previously Joe Green, to get things done. Because if you're not having those conversations with the council, you really can't be effective at governing. And the challenging part sometimes is, we kind of get into our own bubble of, well, I got to look out for my district, because, you know, we want to try and bring funding in, or whatever it might be. But the reality is, you have to look at the full scope of what it means to the city for every decision you make. So I try and take that into the decision-making process. I try and have those conversations. If you ever watch a council meeting, you know that we don't always agree with each other. But we do, I think, all have the best interest of the city at hand when we're trying to make those decisions. And those conversations are what pave the way to that progress.
Yeah. You know, before we started recording, we were talking a little bit about just the various needs in our community and kind of the competing priorities that come up. And, you know, as a city council member, ultimately, it's your decision that impacts that. So how do you decide? When we have a list of things we want to do, how, how do you decide?
It is very tough. And you have to look at the priorities of the community, right? And so I think that comes through. I mean, a lot of, like, so we've recently talked about the AVO, we talked about the wave, we have a Parks Master Plan that we're trying to complete before we can make any decisions, even on something like the park that's going to be at Madigual.
Right.
You really do have to take all that into account. You have to look at the needs and the benefits of what's going to have the largest impact on the overall community. Something as little as a sidewalk that some people might cast away as it's not a big deal, means the world to somebody who can get to school safely. You know, putting in a speed hump in a residential area where in some people, and look, I'll be honest, Sunset, there's way too many speed humps on Sunset. But there are other areas of the community that need those things. And that, that basic infrastructure really does make a huge impact for the people that live there. So you need to make sure that you're looking at the totality of what it is for the city and what it means to the residents. So whether it is something like the moonlight or the wave or the AVO, or if it's something as simple as a streetlight or a sidewalk, or just fixing the potholes, you know, all of that needs to be looked at and taken into account when you're, when you're kind of making those decisions. But again, you know, how do you make those decisions? It's working with the council. It's trying to set, as a council, what our priorities and our needs are for our community. And so we do that every year. You know, we look at what, what our priorities are going to be for the council, and we try and check those off. And a lot of it has to do with what can we get funding for? What can we generate revenue from as far as the city? But what type of grants are out there? Both state, local, federal, whatever they might be. And then you kind of start carving out the process from there. You know, I mean, housing's a big one. Infrastructure's a big one. You know, there's just so many things that we have to constantly be looking at. And, and how you do that is you, again, you sit down with other council members, you talk about it as a city, and what's going to have the largest impact.
Yeah. You know, I said in your bio that you work for a large national company. And so I'm curious how your business expertise filters into your decision-making process as a council member. Do you rely on that?
I do, I do. And so the ability to work with small business owners has actually helped me a tremendous amount, especially when you're looking at the impacts it's going to have when you're making a decision. So something as little as signage in the Business Park that I've had a lot of business owners ask me for, and when they started getting cited for having A-frames out, it drove their business and their revenue down.
Right.
And you never want to hurt or have a negative impact on your small business owners. But also, when it comes to like a budgeting standpoint, you know, when we talk about the wave, and we're at a million-dollar loss, and we subsidize $400,000 every year, you know, to me, with my, my business sense and working for a large corporation, all I see is negative impact, right, on, on the budget. But as a resident, and having grown up in an area that had three swimming pools, I also understand what it would mean to the community if they lost that asset.
Right.
You know, and so I try and take all of that expertise and experience that I've had, not just through a business standpoint, but through life experience as well, to make sure that you're making the right decision. And, you know, you don't always get it right. And you pray to God that you get it right every time. But you really have to try and utilize every tool you have to make the best decisions for the community.
Yeah, wow. So what do you think, then, are some top priorities for Vista over the next few years?
Housing's going to be a big one. You know, with our master plan that we've looked at, I think that the, the thought is that there's going to be 130,000 residents in Vista at some point. So when we're looking at building that out, it's making sure that we have infrastructure in the way of, you need to have businesses, you need to have grocery stores, you need to have parks. And the challenging part with all of that is that we don't have a lot of land in Vista. A lot of it's already been developed, and unless you're going to tear something down and rebuild on it, it makes it challenging to put all of those things in place. But housing, not just in Vista, but throughout the state of California, and really across the country, is going to be a huge thing. My wife and I just bought our second home. We sold our first one. Housing is expensive, and I do not envy anybody trying to get into the housing market now or try and purchase their first home. You know, I thank my wife all the time, because if not for her saving acumen at a young age, my, you know, Ally started saving when she was 16 years old, we wouldn't have been able to buy our first home if we didn't have that nest egg that she had built up. And because of that, I was able to start saving money, so we could then purchase a larger home for our growing family. But housing will be the largest thing, I think, that Vista needs to tackle at some point. The other thing, you know, I get a lot of residents that ask us to hire more first responders, whether it's through firefighters or deputies. And it comes at a tremendous cost. You know, Vista contracts out our deputies through the county. Average cost to onboard somebody is about 450,000, and then you have an ongoing expense of about 400,000 thereafter. And so when you look at that, you need to see what the long-term outcome of that will be, especially when we have contracts that come up. You know, the sheriff's department's about to get a 3% to 4% increase on their contract. But community safety is another big one. And I think the third one's going to be homelessness. You know, I mean, we've done a lot with trying to, I mean, we put the navigation center in. You know, I don't know if you were there last night when you saw that we had partnered with Urban Angels in a, in a youth opportunity to try and get kids off the street, the San Diego Foundation that we just started working with for our outreach program. So we're, we're trying to tackle that issue, or the rescue mission, I mean. We're trying to tackle that issue head-on, but it's challenging. You know, I mean, we, we grew in population of unhoused individuals by almost double during COVID. And Vista has a tremendous amount of resources. So we have a lot of people that come here trying to get help. And so, I mean, those would be the three largest things. And it's a continuous work in progress. None of those things are going to be solved overnight. Anybody that comes in here and tells you that they have the perfect plan to solve everything, I'd love to hear it. I tell people all the time, if I could solve homelessness, I'd make a lot more money doing something other than what I'm doing. But those are going to be the top priorities for Vista moving forward, especially in the coming years and in coming decades, to be honest.
You're talking about all of the growth in housing that the city is going to encounter over the next few years. What are some thoughts that, do you have any thoughts about how we can maintain our diverse culture and our community character while growing at this breakneck speed?
Yeah.
Any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I mean, if you look, you have to be smart in the way you plan it, right? You can't just put up a bunch of high-rise apartments and try and, you know, fill, fill this high density. But you also do need to have dense spaces. You know, you look at what we've done along, like the Paseo Artist Village and that whole area of Santa Fe, you need to continue to kind of grow like that. But you also can look at Madigual and Melrose, where we're going to put in 34 single-family homes that are attainable homes. And for anybody that doesn't know what attainable is, it just means that they will be no higher than the rate at which you can get an FHA loan. So they'll probably still be a million dollars, which is very difficult for people to afford. But you have to be constantly looking for ways to make it more affordable for people. You know, for, for this council, we passed a 9% inclusionary housing measure. You know, developers can still pay the in-lu fees to not have affordable housing. But we've also, you know, we have senior housing going, and we have veterans housing that we're looking into. We have other affordable units that the city has gifted land to developers, so they can maintain the affordable aspect of those units. So you have to really explore all those options, you know? And when you look at the build-out, there are areas that we do have land or that land is available to try and put in spaces for more people to live here. But it also comes down to public transit, you know? You need to have public transit. You need to take care of your roads, you know? You need to have, you have to have accessibility to individuals that want to get around, so they can patron different areas of the city. And I think all of that needs to be taken into account. But that's going to be a long-term process. I mean, you're talking two, three, four decades over time, to make sure. It'll be long after I'm on this council. If I'm still on the council in 40 years, I, please, please come talk to me about it.
I think the record is Judy Ritter at 26 years.
I thank, I thank her every time I see her for serving as long as she did in the capacity she did.
Yeah.
I know she is very happy to be retired.
Yeah. Well, those are all really challenging, complex, with problems with lots of variables and kind of undefined parameters. It's a really, those are all really complex things, and that's hard. But I want to ask you, you know, being a council member, there has to be some joy. So tell me, what do you, what's fun about being on the council? What do you like about it? What, what do you love about it?
Even in challenging times, I still enjoy it. And I mean that so sincerely.
Yeah.
I get such joy out of working with the community, you know? And I brought up Madigual Park earlier today, or earlier in this, in this podcast. But that was something that was so impactful to me, because the residents that live in that area have been fighting against development there for nearly two decades. And I made them a promise before I was elected. I'm like, if I get elected, I can't promise that I will get you a park, but I can promise that I'll try. And I had so many people tell me it would never happen. The family that owned it wouldn't sell it, you know, all these different things. And after an hour conversation with the owners of the property, we were able to come to an agreement that if the city were to utilize it as a park, they would take the idea back to their family, and they'd potentially sell it to the city. And eventually, we acquired that space. But that's all because of community action, you know? And the other thing is, being on the council, you get to meet so many different people, not just in District Four, but business owners. You get to meet other leaders in the community, get to meet residents that just want to talk to you about their day-to-day life. And I really do enjoy every moment of that. It's, it's a blessing. And as much as it can be difficult at times, you have to look for the good things that, that come with it as well. And Vista's such a beautiful city, you know, from the parks to the moonlight, just all these different things. I'm fortunate enough to live over by Buena Vista Parks, so the duck pond's right there. I take my dog to South Buena Vista. You know, there's a lot of good things that we have here in Vista. And so when I can go out to the community and talk to them about those things, it really does bring me a lot of joy.
That's great. That's good. I'm glad, because it would be a real bummer if you didn't like it. Because it's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
You know, our council, for folks who don't know, our council's technically a part-time council. It is, you are paid for the role, but it's definitely not a salary that anyone could live on, really.
No.
And, and so most of our council members work other full-time or more jobs. And so I'm glad that you like it, because otherwise, that would be a real bummer.
It would be a bummer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you mentioned a couple of things about Vista that are cool. What do you think makes Vista the special place that it is?
I, I think it's because of how much diversity you find throughout the community, right? And so like I said, the Business Park, if you, just in District Four, right? You go from the Business Park to Shadow Ridge, to all this old agricultural community. And from there, you go into the downtown area, which all has been rejuvenated. You look at all the things from there. You go to the moonlight, you go to the park. I mean, there is so much in the city to do between trails and just entertainment. We have the brewery scene here. We have restaurants. We have, there is so much happening here all the time. I think that is what makes us so unique and amazing. And all we're, all we're continuing to do is grow upon that, you know? I mean, we're trying to attract new businesses. I love the fact that we got a Trader Joe's, and because that's going to bring in more business into that area. But it also brings in people from other communities that are going to see all that Vista has to offer. You know, I mean, you look at the different festivals. We have Strawberry Festival, which the Chamber does a phenomenal job with. I mean, you bring in almost 100,000 people to that, and they get to experience all of these different things in our downtown area. And then they want to come back. They want to see more. And I think that is 100% what makes our, our city so unique. And, you know, you look at it, and you can still see the footprint of the agriculture that really was the foundation of Vista. I mean, I could talk on this for, for much longer, but I mean, it is, it is. There is just so much diversity in our community that, that makes Vista a really special place.
Yeah, I agree. When I moved here in 2003, to me, it just, I moved a lot as a kid. I went to 13 schools before I was 13. So I moved a ton all around the Dallas-Fort Worth area. But when I landed in Vista, it really felt like home. And I think a lot of people have that shared experience, where it just feels like a place where kind of everyone belongs, and you can find your people, you can find what you like to do, like you said. So I really appreciate that.
I just want to say, I completely agree with that. I mean this very sincerely. I did not call California home until I moved to Vista.
Yeah.
When, when I moved up here with Ally, the reason we bought our first home here is because we did fall in love with this community. This is where we want to raise our children. This is where we want to retire. Whether I'm on the council or not, isn't going to be indicative of whether or not we stay. We do genuinely love this city. And I'm so grateful that I found this little hidden gem up here in North County, because I think that it has a lot to offer.
Yeah, that's great. Well, I want to ask you, you've been on council since 2022. And so if you had to think about maybe three things that have happened since you've been on council that you've been involved in, like three things you're really proud of? Toot your horn, tell us what you're proud of.
Wow, three things. So I had already mentioned Madigual Park and the reasons for that, so I won't, I won't repeat that. The stoplight over on Melrose and Dawson, you know, for 10 years, they've been asking for that stoplight. And the community was just so frustrated. They were getting angry about it. That was, when I walked the doors over there, that was the one thing they all asked for. And we were able to get community feedback. I took it to Sam Hassanen, who is our traffic engineer, and we were able to get approval from the council to make that happen. So it takes a lot longer, though, I learned. You know, that was one of the things I did in my first six months. And it won't be installed until December of this year. So it's, government moves at a glacial pace, but I'm glad I was able to accomplish that. The other thing is, we're going to get sidewalks on Sunset, which we just recently did. And if you've ever walked down Sunset, there are not a lot of sidewalks. I mean, there are, but they're all incomplete. So we'll have, we'll have that at some point, complete, so people can be safe walking down the street. I mean, there's so much. I mean, you can talk about inclusionary housing. You can, I mean, you can talk about the different infrastructure things that we've done. You can talk about the protected bike lanes that we're going to be putting in. You know, going, going back to the community and letting them know that the things that they ask for, we can deliver on, is hugely important. The other thing is, when it comes to, to safety of the community, we hired a program for 12 new EMTs and two BLS ambulances. You know, in 10 years prior to my being on the council, we only hired two deputies. We had a third one added by the county. And in the first two years, we've hired two new deputies, one for DUI and one for Traffic Patrol. So there's a lot of things that we can look at that are positive. And those are probably my biggest things that I'm, I'm proud of. But if, if I gave you the list of the things that were accomplished just in the first 12 months, it's a lot, it's a lot of things. And it's not to toot my own horn, because it wasn't just me that did it.
Sure.
I had to work with other council members to make that happen. I had to work with the community to make it happen. But a lot of things that people told me were pipe dreams that couldn't be done, we got done. And, and it was never a matter of, no, we can't. It was, how are we going to do it?
Yeah. If people of constituents want to connect with you, what's the best way for them to, to hear from you or to, to give you input?
So I am very, very easily contacted. So you can either call me. I'll give you my cell phone number later. But you can reach me via email at do'donnell@vista.gov. You can also, I'm on Instagram at O'Donnell for Vista. I have a Facebook page. Next door, I mean, I have people reach out to me in every different capacity you can imagine. So anybody that wants to get in touch with me, I promise you, I will respond. If it takes me a day or two sometimes, because we do get a lot of emails, plus I do have a full-time job, but I will get back to you.
Yeah.
But that would probably be the easiest way, is just shoot me an email, or shoot me a text, and I'm happy to respond.
Yeah, that's great. And you're brave to say all of those ways, because I know at the Chamber, I get emails, texts, calls, Instagram messages, Facebook messages, LinkedIn messages. Sometimes, don't you want to go bonkers with all the ways that people can?
You know?
It's a lot. It's a lot of input.
This is what I signed up for. You know, you don't run for office and try and shut people out. If people want to get ahold of you, you have to listen. And that's your job as an elected official, is to make sure that the people know they have a voice. Once you lose that, then you, you have, you have lost the ability to effectively do your job.
And well, you have to meet them where they are, too.
Yeah.
Right? The way that they communicate, right? You said the only way to reach me is between 12 and 2 on Tuesdays at this, you know, that wouldn't work. So, yeah. Is there anything we didn't talk about that you want to share or go over?
I mean, I don't know if there's anything we didn't talk about. But, you know, I just really appreciate being here today and have the opportunity to kind of share this information and then just talk to the people of Vista. I think the Chamber's doing a great job, so I appreciate everything that's going on. I get compliments all the time of what's taking place. I used to be a member of the Chamber, but because we moved into a new home and had a little son, I had to cut back on some of the finances. But I think you all do a great job. And if you look at the business community, and all that is happening here, and just the growth that we've had, I think it's tremendous. But also, I mean this so sincerely, it doesn't matter how old you are, whether you're, you know, grade school, high school, if you're a member of the community for the last 30, 40 years, whatever it is, reach out to your council. Share your voice. And I, especially to our youth, I tell them all the time, you know, I won by 30 votes, and they're the next leaders in this community. Your voice matters. And you walk into rooms sometimes, and you see people with these fancy titles, or whatever it might be. And, and you think that they're smarter or know more, just because they sit in a position of power. And the reality is that we are not experts in everything. You know, some of us know a little bit about a lot, some of us know a lot about a little. But when, when you're in, especially at a But when, when you're in, especially at a younger age. I don't, I'm not cool anymore, I'm not in high school, I don't know all that's going on, I don't know all the lingo, but. If there's an issue that's impactful to, to that community or to your other students or just, you know, youth in general. Come talk to us, you know, let us know and, and just be a voice in your community. And, and everybody for that matter, because we can't be everywhere at once, but the community feedback is so important. Not just to me, but I think to all the council members and just making decisions at the city level. That the more that you let us know what your thoughts are, the better we can provide and, and execute against what's going to be best and, and when we make votes for the city.
Great, so, well, Dan, I want to thank you for being here, but before we wrap up the interview, I always have a few rapid-fire questions to ask every guest. And the first is. The first is, do you have a book that you recommend?
I have two.
Okay, I will allow it.
Don't, don't be thrown off by the title, one is Daily Dad, it's from a gentleman named Ryan Holiday. It's just one page a day and it's these little excerpts that kind of tell you. And, and again, it's applicable to parents, right? But it just kind of tells you about how your children are constantly watching the example that you are leading by.
So true.
And so they're, they're little sponges that absorb everything and to just always be cognizant of that and it just gives these little anecdotal. You know, stories or whatever it might be or parables to try and follow through for that day. But it's just a really healthy reminder of, of what it is to raise a child and, and to do a good job at it, you know, because parenting is very tough. And a friend of mine recommended that book to me, actually sent me that book after they found out that we were about to have another child. So that would be the first one, and then Team of Rivals, there's a woman named Doris Goodwin and I mentioned this when the Chamber actually had. When you guys hosted the forum for the candidates, two years ago, I mentioned this book. And I think that it's very relative to the times we live in, it's about Abraham Lincoln. And the cabinet that he built and the diversity he put on that cabinet, a lot of them were adversaries that actually wanted to be president. They were not from the same political party, but he, he was able to form a very cohesive. Unit amongst his cabinet during one of the toughest times in American history during the Civil War. And I, it's just a really good read because I think it just reminds us that regardless of our political affiliations. Especially in the political climate that we live in, we all have a lot more in common than we have apart. And we agree on a lot more than we disagree on, and I think that we've lost the ability to have those conversations. And I think it's just a very good read to kind of see how we might be able to get back to that at some point. And just remember, we're all neighbors, we're all, we all want a better quality of life and, and we're all fighting for the same thing and, and we need to get back to that place.
Great, I love it, that's a good one, that's a good recommendation. Okay, Dan, what's your jam? Tell me a song you love.
My jam, my favorite song probably ever written is Tambourine Man by Bob Dylan.
Ah.
It is, I don't know why, it touches my soul for some reason, but Bob Dylan is my favorite artist, you know, I've. I don't know if I'd go see him now because it's quite expensive, but I, anytime he's on the radio, I turn it up, I play it at home on Alexa. I just, I. It's, it's a song that I just enjoy so tremendously.
That's great, I love Bob Dylan, I have seen him live, it wasn't great.
That's what I've heard, so.
It wasn't great.
But, but you got to see the greatest, greatest lyrical artist in the history of writing.
I was grateful to be there and I was, I wasn't there for the, I was there for the performance, but I wasn't there for the performance, if that makes sense.
Right.
Yeah, so I love Bob Dylan, okay, tell me something that inspires you.
I don't want to sound corny, but I, literally my wife and my child, I mean, everything.
That's not corny.
I know, it just, it sounds so cliche sometimes, but I mean, everything I do, I do for them. And, and the reality is, you know, I mentioned it with the house, but just in general in life, I wouldn't be where I am without my wife. You know, she has constantly been there to support me, she has always, always been an ear that I can go to to talk about things. She gives me her feedback and, and her input on everything. But to have somebody that you know is always, always in your corner, even when she might disagree with you on things and I. I'm a stubborn person at times, I, I know that I come across as jovial, but I can be a little difficult to deal with once in a while. And, and she weathers that very, very well and I, I appreciate her and you know. Having a son or just a child changes your perspective on life. I, I look at the man I want my son to be and, and the man that I want to be to try and help him get there. And, and those are the two things that, you know, every day I wake up, I'm grateful that I get to see his little smiling face in his crib, jumping up and down. Thank you, he's a chubby little kid though, he's, he's almost, he's almost three feet tall, he weighs 35 pounds, he's not even two yet.
Wow.
So he's a big boy.
That, a doll, a total doll, okay. Last question, give me a business, a Vista business that deserves a shout out.
I'm going to cheat and not just give you one.
Okay, okay.
Alright, so I'm, I'll do quick, the two, so one, like we just did a spot for Connie's on our 10-year anniversary, Connie's Cafe on Melrose. Go check her out, she's got amazing food, breakfast and lunch. Sabora Vida, it's a family-owned business over off Shadow Ridge. Wonderful family, they have all vegan options, coffee's amazing, food's great. But the two that I really want to highlight are, one is, is Bertec, Bertec Vineyards over off of Sycamore. Nobody really knows that it's there and they have such a fantastic selection of wine, they have great pizza over there, the ambiance is great, they partner with other local breweries to. Bring in taps so that way if you're not a big wine drinker, but you want to go enjoy the space, you can. And June My Sushi is the other one, they're right off Melrose, right down the street from Bertec, they're off. What's it, Melrose and Sycamore right there by the gas station, they, the infusion that they've done with their sushi and just the, the. Atmosphere there is fantastic, so those would be the two that I'd say go check out as soon as you can.
Well, you technically gave four.
I did, I gave four.
Three restaurants and a winery, so I think I know where your mind's at. Food and bev.
Hey, check out everything in District Four.
Awesome.
Got to support local business.
Absolutely, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, I mean that so sincerely and thank you for all the work that you do. I really do enjoy your podcasts, I enjoy working with you here at the Chamber.
Yeah.
And anytime you need something, you ever want me back on, just give me a call, let me know.
Awesome, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you to my guest, council member Dan O'Donnell, and thank you for listening to Velocity. If you like what you heard, please subscribe wherever you get your podcasts and tell a friend. Help us move Vista forward with velocity. The Vista Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit organization that serves as a catalyst for business growth. Find us online at vista-chamber.org.